At this time, if our Zoom host could please start the webinar.
Webinar started.
Thank you. Good afternoon and welcome to today's hybrid New York City Council hearing for the Committee on Mental Health. To minimize disruptions, please place all electronic devices to vibrate or silent mode. If you'd like to submit testimony, please send via email to testimony@council.myc.gov. Again, that is testimony@council.myc.gov. Thank you for your cooperation. Chair Lee, we are ready to begin.
Okay, great. Okay, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Councilmember Lyndley, and I'm the Chair of the Committee on Mental Health, Disabilities and Addiction. And today, I'm very excited about this hearing, actually. It's holding a hearing entitled Oversight: Making New York City Accessible for Individuals and Employees with Disabilities. And at this time, actually, there are no colleagues. I know they're on their way. There's a lot of hearings going on today, so I know folks are floating around. So as they come in, I'll acknowledge my colleagues who are on the committee. And also, today, we're going to be hearing two pieces of legislation, both of which I'm proud to be a sponsor. The first is Introduction Number 681, A Local Law to Amend the Administrative Code of the City of New York in Relation to Workforce Development for Persons with Disabilities. And the second is Introduction Number 682, A Local Law in Relation to Requiring the Mayor's Office for People with Disabilities to Collect from Each New York City Office, Department, or Agency a Comprehensive Five-Year Accessibility Plan. And before I begin, I'd just like to acknowledge Speaker Adrian Adams, who I've heard from multiple advocates, is the very first City Council Speaker to actually mention the disability community in a State of the City address. And I know that Speaker Adams' passion and vision for the community served as the impotence that sparked discussions with disability advocates that led to the drafting of the two bills that we hear today. So we are definitely indebted to the speaker, as well as the advocates, for the important work they do every day, and we thank them all. And just on a personal note for myself, I will, I have to say, it was tremendous just meeting a lot of the advocates in the disabilities community who I've gotten to know. And, you know, I just want to thank them because I will be the first to admit that this is an area that I myself need to be more educated on, as well as, I think, a lot of my colleagues, as well as a lot of the city agencies. And I really wanted to thank the advocates for their warmth in welcoming me to just use this as a learning experience as well, and to really teach me, because I have fumbled on certain things. And, you know, I think what's important that I wanted to mention is that I think we have to remember that this community is not a monolith. There are folks and people with disabilities of all that range greatly, and we have to make sure that we're listening to their concerns, keeping our ears and eyes on the ground, and really listening to what the advocates are telling us. And, you know, as a city, I think we need to do better. And one of the things that I will mention later on in my questions is, you know, one of the first things I noticed when I was looking through the portfolio when I took office in January, when I saw the budget for MOPED, I was like, what? It can't be this much. So I know you guys are doing so much with very little, and I want to see how, as a city council, where we can make improvements together. And so that's really why I'm excited for this hearing, because it really is the first one, I don't know if it's the first one ever, but definitely in a very long time, where it's specifically dedicated just for the disabilities community. So I'm very excited to hear from all of you today for, you know, your testimony and just seeing how we can improve things in the city. But just really quickly, some things I wanted to highlight for the record is that about 15% of the global population experiences some form of disability. And by 2050, the UN projects that approximately 68% of the world will reside in urban areas. And it's vitally important that cities such as New York continue to work on increasing access for people with disabilities to ensure their full and effective participation in city life. And I know that federal, state, local laws provide protections for individuals with disabilities by attempting to remove barriers to their participation in society, but there's still much more work to do. And New York City, which is home to almost 1 million residents with self-identified disabilities, faces a myriad of accessibility challenges, particularly within our subway system and other transit systems. But we also know for a fact that addressing accessibility barriers, particularly in employment, has the potential to not only benefit individuals with disabilities directly, but the city as a whole. According to a study by the Rockefeller Institute of Government, "The Economic Impact of Creating Workforce Training Programs and Employment Opportunities for People with Disabilities Resulted in Over 5,000 Workers with Disabilities Being Employed and Generated Over $400 Million in Economic Output Throughout the State." That breaks down to about $108 generated for every hour worked by a person with a disability. Individuals with disabilities have long faced entrenched inaccessibility within the employment landscape. And according to the Center for the Urban Future, which we will hear from, in New York City, "If New York City can lower the rate of unemployment for working-age New Yorkers with disabilities, it can potentially lead to an increase of $3.4 billion in annual wages." And I know the Mayor's Office for People with Disabilities Employment Program, NYC at Work, has connected more than 500 applicants with disabilities to jobs and internships, and these workers make, on average, an annual salary of over $50,000. Also, according to Center for Urban Future, $2.5 million investment could boost NYC at Work's effectiveness by expanding the program's business development capacity and adding new career training programs. But the MOPED's annual budget of a little over $800,000, which is significantly less than the funding provided to comparable agencies in Washington, DC, Chicago, Los Angeles, Boston, and Houston, is just way too low, especially a city of this size. The COVID-19 pandemic reshaped how all individuals approach work, and with remote and hybrid work becoming the norm during the pandemic, it has resulted in greater-than-ever a window of opportunity for the inclusion of individuals with disabilities within the workplace, which is what the folks in the community have been saying for a very long time. Despite this, there's still much more work to be done. This work in how-to-best-accomplishment is what we hope to explore further during this hearing. So we look forward to hearing from the administration, advocates, and concerned New Yorkers about their thoughts on these bills and on the challenges the disability community faces daily, especially in employment, in hopes that we can find a path forward that allows all New Yorkers who want to work the chance to do so. And the point of today's hearing also is, as we introduce these bills, we want feedback and to hear from the advocates on what they think will work, what amendments they would like to seek, and this is the time for that feedback period and for us to take those into consideration. So we look forward to hearing from the administration and all the advocates here today, my colleagues and staff, as well as our committee staff. I want to thank Sarah Suter, who's sitting here, who's done an amazing job putting all this together, so I sound somewhat professional, committee counsel, and Senior Legislative Policy Analyst Kristi Dwyer, who's sitting right over there. And also, I wanted to acknowledge that we are joined by representatives from the administration, Martha Jackson, who is the Assistant Commissioner for Workforce and Business Development at the Mayor's Office for People with Disabilities, Janine Jones, am I saying that right? Okay. Assistant Commissioner for Workforce One, which I'm a huge fan of, by the way, at Small Business Services, and Kadian Otar, am I saying that right? Kadian, okay, sorry. CEI Executive Director at the New York City's Department of Citywide Administrative Services. So I will now turn it over to our committee counsel to administer the oath to members of the administration testifying today.
Thank you, Chair. We will now hear testimony from members of the administration. Will you please raise your right hand? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee, and to respond honestly to council member questions? Thank you. You may begin when ready.
Ah, is the red button? Do you see that?
Yes. You can hear me now?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. I would like to thank Chair Lee and members of the Committee on Mental Health, Disabilities and Addictions for inviting the Mayor's Office for People with Disabilities to provide testimony at today's hearing. My name is Martha Jackson, and I'm the Assistant Commissioner for Employment and Business Development, but I'm also the Director of NYC at Work, MOPD's first public-private workforce program. And I'm pleased to provide testimony today about our office's approach to connecting New Yorkers with disabilities to jobs and careers, and making it easier for employers to hire and support them. A little bit about the Mayor's Office for People with Disabilities. It was conceived of more than 50 years ago, and it's been operating since at least 1973. The Mayor's Office for People with Disabilities is the liaison between New York City government and the disability community. In partnership with all city offices and agencies, MOPD consistently ensures that the rights and concerns of the disability community are included in all city initiatives, and that city programs and policies address the needs of people with disabilities in the areas of transportation, employment, health care, housing, education, access to city services, and financial empowerment for people with disabilities. I'd like to talk first about the need. In the field of workforce development, we've talked about two sides of the equation. On one hand, you have the supply of job seekers looking for new or better jobs. And on the other hand, you have employers with a demand for finding qualified talent. When I joined MOPD seven years ago, we found a huge need on both sides of this equation, among job seekers with disabilities and among employers. We found that New Yorkers with disabilities need more job opportunities with career pathways. As you said, there are approximately 1 million New Yorkers who have disclosed as having a disability. A much higher proportion of New Yorkers with disabilities are jobless, currently at 66%, unemployed, or not even looking for work anymore, compared to those with no disabilities at 39%. Relatedly, the proportion of New Yorkers with disabilities who live in poverty, who live in poverty, is nearly double that of the general population, 29% versus 17%. Additionally, we found an extensive need among employers to make their workplaces more accessible and to have inclusion of people with disabilities. Disability is not often included in organizations' definitions of diversity, equity, inclusion, and access. And many employers do not know what resources are available to them and their employees on disability awareness and education. Most employers lack dedicated staff to support programs specifically for people with disabilities. Even employers interested in hiring people with disabilities do not know where or how to find this talent. I'd like to talk about the solution and NYC at Work. In response, MOPD conceived of and launched a pilot project, NYC at Work, excuse me, in 2017 to address both sides of this equation, the supply of job seekers with disabilities and the demand of employers for qualified talent. NYC at Work is an employment program that recruits pre-screens and connects New Yorkers with disabilities to jobs and internships with our established employer partners in public, private, and nonprofit sectors. We empower our participants by offering them guidance to improve their chances of being hired, but it is up to them to implement our tips and proactively look for opportunities. For partnerships and coalitions, excuse me, we also build partnerships and coalitions on the supply and demand side of NYC's labor market, and we act as an intermediary for them. On the demand side, we established a business development council that includes nearly 100 employers to date from a diverse mix of sectors, including finance and business services, retail, hospitality, health and wellness, technology, human services, nonprofits, and government. This council has been the anchor for connecting our participants to jobs and internships and helping us to understand the need for talent among these employers. On the supply side, as part of our outreach strategy, we built a talent coalition comprised of a diverse array of computer, sorry, community-based organizations, state vocational rehabilitation provider agency, public and private colleges and other organizations. And through this coalition of more than 60 members, we've accessed to an extensive set of job seekers across the five boroughs. In terms of direct technical assistance, we also provide direct technical assistance and services to both stakeholders' group. For businesses, this includes business-to-business meetings, disability awareness training, direct support building and implementing disability employment initiatives, and dissemination of best practices. Disability is diversity. Businesses lack education and awareness on disability etiquette, reasonable accommodation, and disclosure. We've developed a disability etiquette and awareness training and delivered it virtually and in person, reaching over 4,000 city-state and private employees. This training has been presented by MOPD staff with lived experience and covers physical, cognitive, visual, deaf, and hard-of-hearing disabilities, provides a brief overview of the Americans with Disabilities Act, appropriate and inclusive terminology, reasonable accommodation, and resources. On the service provider side, this includes facilitated connections to businesses, support for customizing programming, facilitated collaborations to design business training and awareness modules, opportunities to partner on business-related events and intermediation activities, connecting businesses to the provider communities to effectively match our job seekers to internships and full- or part-time jobs. For the program outcomes, over the first three years of this program, we exceeded our original goals, engaging nearly 2,800 New Yorkers with disabilities, and enrolled more than 1,500 into the program. In addition, we hit 90% of our job placement goal by connecting nearly 600 New Yorkers to jobs and 79 to internships. Among job seekers who found full-time employment, their average salary is nearly $53,000 at present. This is the first public-private workforce development program for New Yorkers with disabilities. We raised funds for the first three years through a mix of state and private foundation sources, such as the Kessler Foundation, the Poses Family Foundation, and the Charles H. Nielsen Foundation. The effects of COVID-19 and pandemic. There was a real need for this program, and that need has grown over the past two and a half years due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the need for remote or hybrid opportunities, the need for new trainings and competitive jobs with sustainable wages that will be part of our economic recovery. Expanding the impact of NYC at Work. With that in mind, with that in mind, in partnership with the Department of Small Business Services, we now plan to take NYC at Work to the next level. Our goal over time is to increase the accessibility of the Workforce One centers and attract an increasing volume of New Yorkers with disabilities to seek services through Workforce One, either virtually or in person. To that effect, SBS and MOPD obtained a grant from New York State, the SION Initiative, which stands for Systems Change Innovation and Opportunity Network, of over $1.1 million over three years. This grant provides the resources to hire three Disability Resource Coordinators, or DRCs, to collaborate on improving the participation of individuals with disabilities, including those with intellectual and development disabilities, in workforce systems and improve their employment outcomes via a sustainable, job-driven, inclusive model that involves businesses and workforce demand. To improve real changes within the system, I'm sorry, to improve real systems change within the Workforce One Career Centers, we're exploring which centers will receive NYC at Work teams to support these Disability Resource Coordinators and to assist the Workforce One staff in accessibility and inclusion for the users of the center who disclose as having a disability or request assistance in programs and services. I'd like to talk about leaning by example in the city as employer. City as lead. Acting as a recruitment resource, NYC at Work has assisted DCAST, or Department of Citywide Administrative Services, to expand its recruitment and gain access to talent-seeking opportunities in city government. The city is poised to lead by example for other employers and hire qualified people with disabilities by use of its 55A program and this mayor's commitment. MOPD has further enhanced its outreach and recruitment efforts by collaborating with DCAST's Office of Citywide Recruitment, or OCR, in promoting the 55A program. The 55A program derives from the New York Civil Service Law to allow qualified persons with disabilities to be appointed to competitive civil service positions without having to take a civil service exam for the position. OCR provides crucial support in the following ways: sets guidance and best practices for the city agency's use of the program, OCR trains agency's 55A coordinators on the application process and the effective use of the program to recruit and diversify their workforce. After agency's interview and select a candidate for their competitive position, OCR processes the 55 applications by referring them to the New York State Adult Career and Continuing Education Services, or ACCESSVR, the State Vocational Rehabilitation Agency, or the New York State Commission for the Blind, to certify that the candidate has a disability and can perform the duties of the position with or without accommodations. MOPD and OCR also conduct robust marketing of the 55A program, both to internal city agencies and to external job seekers, about how the program can be used as their conduit into city government. Through our collaboration, we educate hiring managers, EEO officers, human resources professionals, and those involved in the recruitment and hiring process so that all city agencies can build a more diverse and inclusive environment. The administration has doubled down on this approach when, in August, Mayor Adams announced the following two steps: renewed commitment to fully utilize the 55A program by educating and encouraging city agencies in its use to employ more qualified people with disabilities in the city's workforce; taking steps to ensure that city employees receive disability etiquette and awareness training produced by DCAST in collaboration with MOPD, so that hiring officials and city staff are familiar with our fellow New Yorkers and all that they may have to offer to this workforce. In our forthcoming plan, March of 2022, Mayor Adams's blueprint for economic recovery tasked Mayor's Office for People with Disabilities and the Mayor's Office for Talent and Workforce Development to deliver a comprehensive plan to include increasing the accessibility of center career training and employment opportunities. MOPD and Mayor's Office for Talent and Workforce Development are currently developing that comprehensive plan to address these issues. Once we have finalized the plan, we would happy to be shared, to share it with members of this council. In conclusion, I am grateful, really, to have been given the opportunity over these past seven years to be part of a systems and culture change for New Yorkers with disabilities and their families. In building NYC at Work, we have seen the potential, the progress, and the resiliency of our staff, our remarkable staff, our job seekers, and all our partners through the past two and a half years during the pandemic. Under the leadership of Mayor Adams and our new Commissioner Christina Curry, I am optimistic of our next steps and future plans will continue to prove that at work, it's what you can do that matters. Thank you.
Okay, so, sorry, before we move on, I just want to acknowledge my colleagues, Councilmember Shahana Hanif, as well as Councilmember, sorry, Deputy Speaker Diana Ella, to the hearing. And, sorry, Janine Jones, feel free to go ahead on your testimony if you want. Oh, wait, oh, no. Just Q and A? Oh, okay, okay. Okay, so we'll do Q and A. I'm sorry. Not bad.
I'm new at this, too.
Yeah, I know. I get, I say this at every hearing. One of these days, I'll get it right, I promise. Okay, so I'm just gonna ask a few questions and then open it up to my colleagues also if they have any questions as well. So I know that for the, just on the current work and plans, can you elaborate briefly on the progress and current status of MOPED's existing programs that are intended to increase accessibility for New Yorkers with disabilities? And just to go through really quickly, I know that the following on the website, just the few that I wanted to focus on, the first one was the ASL Direct, as well as Empowered NYC, and the Inclusive Design Guidelines.
Sure.
If there's any updates for that, or how things are going, or any challenges that you see as well.
I can start with the ASL Direct.
Okay.
The program has handled more than 3,500 calls, emails, and in-person visits since 2018. Through August 31, 2020, the program has handled more than 500 cases, and HRA has handled more than 675. Since January, MOPD has handled 267 cases, and HRA has handled, I believe, over 600. So I can tell you that at this point, we had two staff at the ASL Direct at MOPD. One of them just resigned last week, and we are bringing on another person at the end of the month. It's actually someone from, actually, let me, let me correct myself. That's not accurate. That person actually had the job of Disability Service Facilitator, which is a different, a different role. She also, it's the same person at ASL, and she had just resigned to take care of her little one. So that role will be filled by someone from my staff.
Oh, nice. Okay.
I apologize for that. I'm happy to talk about Empowered NYC.
Yes, yes, go ahead, please.
Okay, so.
And if you could just briefly explain, because I know it's financial support, right, and counseling?
It's, it's free financial counseling for New Yorkers with disabilities and their families. And we received funding allocated about, it didn't go to MOPD, it actually went to Department of Citywide, I'm sorry, Department of Consumer and Worker Protection, and the National Disability Institute to collaborate with us on Empowered NYC. It was a pilot program to provide training in financial empowerment for New Yorkers with disabilities and their families. And through additional funding, we were able to keep a bridge going through COVID to be able to support our community. The pilot has helped more than 1,000 families and reduced their debt by more than $442,000 from 2019 to 2022. I'm also really pleased to say that DCWP, Department of Citywide Worker Protection, is going to be adding additional training to all of their financial empowerment counselors. They have a contract with Cornell, the Yang Tan Institute, to provide that training, which is going to begin in January of 2023. And the training that was provided by National Disability Institute was really the first of its kind. It wasn't just about Social Security and SSDI. It was about budgeting. It was about understanding what to do before you go to work so that your benefits will not be impacted, or can, or possibly will not be impacted, if you choose to either go to work or return to work. And one of the reasons that this is so important, I can't stress this enough, is that many folks stay on disability because of their health care benefits. And if they don't have a job that pays a decent wage and provides benefits, it's going to be very difficult for them to change that. SSI, and it goes to the family, it goes to housing, it goes to food. It's a part of a family's budget. And so if you're going to give that up, you have to give it up for something that's going to give you something better than. And so this is a huge issue. It's a, historically, it's a, it's a generational issue. It's a lack of information. It's antiquated information. And the reason we started Empowered NYC is because of the folks that were coming to us through NYC at Work. We knew that they had information that was totally inadequate, that was wrong, that made them afraid to think about going to work. And the truth of the matter is, is that we were concerned at the beginning that maybe most of the people coming to NYC at Work would be people who wanted to stay on benefits. But the truth of the matter is that that's not the case at all. I mean, our average salary is $53,000, and most of the folks have full-time employment. For those that have significant physical disabilities, there's, that's another issue, which I think maybe we could talk about at another time. there's, that's, that's another issue, which I think maybe we could talk about at another time. Oftentimes, they stay on their benefits. And the downside of that is that there's a salary cap for them as well.
And just out of curiosity, what's the main mode? Because I know that you had mentioned that there's a lot of misinformation or old information. So what has been the main mode of outreach for the Empowered NYC program?
So when we started the pilot, we did, we did community sessions. We went to, I probably think about eighty partners over the course of the, the two years. We actually had sites, counseling sites, at different nonprofits where people who were going for services could actually get that as part of, of their, you know, part of their services at, at their nonprofit organization. We actually had them, before COVID, we would have counselors come to MOPD, oftentimes in the evenings, to be able to give seminars. And then throughout the cost, the, the course of COVID, we had virtual presentations on a regular basis. Everything can be done virtually still at this point. But the wonderful thing is that when this training is completed, that any family member, anyone with a disability, can walk into any financial empowerment center and should be able to get, you know, correct information, timely information. And one of the things that has been a huge help is being able to help people with their Social Security overpayments, because that's something most organizations did not know how to deal with.
Okay. And just really quickly on the Inclusive Design Guidelines.
Yes.
So in March 2021, I know New York City Department of Housing Preservation and Development, HPD, released newly revised design guidelines to promote equity, health, and sustainability for affordable housing. And, and the plans call for the city investments to combat disparities and barriers to various opportunities. But just out of curiosity, was MOPED also involved or consulted by HPD in developing the guidelines at the time?
So I, I'm sorry, I'm actually thinking about Inclusive Design Guidelines that were part of MOPD, but we were not part of this, I don't believe.
Okay. Okay, so, yeah, and, did you, I mean, I'm guessing, is your office, and are you familiar with the accessibility guidelines that they, on the HPD side that came out, or?
I'm, I'm just sorry, I'm having a little trouble here.
Oh, sorry, on the, the, the familiar, are you familiar with the accessibility guidelines that was released by HPD?
Yes.
Okay, okay. No, so I just wanted to make sure or see if they had consulted with MOPED when designing, you know, or developing the guidelines. And if not, I was just curious, you know, how it's been working with HPD on that.
So I'm going to say I don't think that I can respond to that, but I'd like to be able to and get back to you on that.
Okay. Okay. And also, can you speak to any other work MOPED has done that relates to ensuring, improving accessibility in New York City's affordable housing stock, whether independently or in conjunction with other city agencies or departments or offices?
Well, I'm actually here, testimony on employment. So if there's anything else that I can respond to and get back to you, I'm happy to do that.
Okay. Got it, got it, okay. So the other, moving slightly to the budget. So I think there's definitely, at least, you know, there's a clear lack of public investment for supporting New Yorkers with disabilities. And for example, MOPED's current annual budget is only eight hundred and twenty thousand, which is significantly less than per capita funding for disability agencies in other cities across the US, major cities like, you know, Chicago, Los Angeles, Boston. The current funding for MOPED breaks down to approximately less than a dollar per capita in New York City. And I think I know the answer to this question, but do you believe this annual budget is sufficient to accomplish all of MOPED's goals?
I can tell you that we have been in, in regular and constant conversations with OMB and with our leadership. And I believe that the commitment of this mayor is true. And so as we figure out what it is we're going to do in this new administration and under Commissioner Curry as well, I think there's, you know, these conversations will be ongoing and fruitful. I think we all know we need to focus on this, and I believe that's the intent.
And in your opinion, in order to really sort of see the vision of MOPED come to fruition, you know, is there a budget amount that you think would be sufficient? Or what would you at least like to see it grow, you know, increase to?
So because we have a brand-new commissioner, and she's only been in the office about four weeks and three days, I, I think we really need to give her the time to see what her vision might be and where she wants to take this office. And at, at the point that we've been able to also deliver updates on our program, the, the comprehensive plan, I mean, I think at that time, we'd be in the position to really talk honestly about where we are and what we need.
Okay, awesome. Four weeks and two days, that's very short.
And she's out every day.
She's no, yeah. And if possible, would you be able to provide the committee with workforce management information such as MOPED's headcount, payroll costs for permanent staff and contractors as well? To, to the, to this committee, sorry.
So I will check with our, our Chief of Staff, who also does our budget. She's actually out with COVID.
Oh, no, okay.
I will check with her and we'll get back to you on that as well.
Got it. Okay, and so one of my favorite topics to talk about is transit deserts, because I'm in a district that is a transit desert. We have no railways in my district. I think I'm one of only a couple of city council districts that has no railways. So we do rely heavily on cars, other modes of transportation, buses for sure, MTA. So, you know, as we know, the MTA not only desperately needs to make basic, much-needed repairs to the subway system, but also put work into making the entire system more accessible and equitable for the city as a whole. In June, the MTA said that it would add elevators and ramps to ninety-five percent of subway stations by 2055 as part of a settlement agreement and two class-action lawsuits. And although the MTA is a public benefit corporation that falls under state control, does MOPED, a local office that is likely more tuned into the accessibility issues that affect the transit system, do you work in conjunction regularly with MTA? For example, is MOPED ever consulted by MTA to provide recommendations for increasing accessibility within the New York City transit system?
So up until March, or actually, I think it was June, the previous Commissioner Victor Colisi was actually on the MTA board, and, and I believe was one of the first board members who was disclosed as having a disability, a physical disability. And so, you know, that information, his both personal and professional experiences were a huge part of that. I'm hoping that at some point, we can go back to having a representative as well, but we'll see where that goes.
Yes, definitely. I think having folks on the board with that lived experience is very important, very, very important. And does MOPED track the issues related to accessibility in transit deserts where residents have at least a fifteen-minute walk to the nearest subway or rail station? And what, if anything, is MOPED doing to boost accessible transit in these deserts? Or what more could be done, from your perspective?
So because I was here to talk about workforce, I, I don't want to misspeak. But because we do have new leadership, I, I think it's, you know, it's fair that we come back to you with some of these answers when the commissioner is, you know, had a little bit more time to get settled and understand. And also, really, to, to meet with the community. She hasn't even really had much of a chance to do that at all. And I know that's one of the most important things that she wants to do. So I think after those, you know, consistent community sessions, I think we'll have more to share.
Okay. Or even in the past, you know, in your experiences at MOPED, have there ever been conversations around the transfer? I mean, I'm assuming there have been conversations, but I would, I guess just as a note, if there are recommendations that, you know, MOPED has on transit desert issues and accessibility in New York City to just keep us in the loop if you ever need our help with that as well?
Absolutely.
I just want to acknowledge my colleagues, Councilmember Mealy, as well as Councilmember Botcher, who have joined us as well. Okay, so I'm just gonna skip, okay. So going back to the At Work Initiative and fifty-five A hiring goals. So the New York City's fifty-five A program allows a qualified person with a certified disability to be hired into competitive civil service positions without taking an exam. So can you describe how effective this program has been in recent years? I know you kind of went over it briefly during the testimony. And is there any data on the number of qualified persons hired as a result?
So for that part, I think I'm going to turn that over to Katie Natar, because she has that.
Thank you so much. And I appreciate the slight delay as I read the caption to catch up on the question. So within, I'd like to give a little bit of a background on the fifty-five A program. So generally, the program was used for, it was mostly individuals who have already been employed with city government, and so maybe later on developed a disability throughout their career or through education that we've been doing, learned about the program. But with our partnership starting in, with MOPD and DCAST's partnership starting in 2018, we've taken several different approaches to ensure that we are, the program is used as an entry point for individuals with disabilities to get into city government. So some of the approaches, approaches that we took was first to make sure that we updated the documentations that provide guidance to agencies on what the program is. So that was our Personal Services Bulletin. So we looked at it, which hasn't been updated years before, and we updated the policy itself. We clarified the types of positions that were eligible, only competitive. We clarified what agencies were eligible under the program and the general application process. The next step that we took was that we then held a fifty-five A symposium where we invited individuals that were serving in the recruitment capacity or HR, EEO officers, and our fifty-five A coordinators. Those are the staff within the agency that handles the internal agency application. And we provided them with the updates that we made to the PSB, but also it was an opportunity to discuss what we wanted to do with the program, how we wanted to use a lot, utilize the program as an recruitment tool. And following that conversation, we then had a series of disability etiquette training, which is really important in getting people to see the best ways to engage and communicate with this, individuals with disability. And that also led to the very first citywide diversity career fair and also a series of agency-specific career fairs specifically for individuals with disability. And so through these different approaches, we saw an incremental, really robust increase in the number of individuals that were coming into city government, new to city government through that program. And it's really through that education that was helpful in making sure that people were being hired in, in the program. Unfortunately, with the pandemic, like everything, that we kind of lost the momentum that was there. But one thing that we've done is to reconvene and say, hey, how can we make sure that we are utilizing the program again? And so we once again started doing training, this time in inclusive and diverse recruitment training for anyone that's involved in the recruitment process. We started with, we hosted another symposium because we knew that there were new staff with the new administration, and we needed to make sure that they were educated on that program. And then in a month, we're having another citywide diversity career fair. So we wanted to make sure that we were educating our internal city agencies on the process, what to expect. But another part that we did is focused on the external promotion to all of our, to the job seekers. The first thing is, most people are not familiar with jobs within the city or the process for getting that. So we wanted to start with just that overall education piece to let them know, like, hey, the city's here. You know, you can get opportunities, and here's how you can do so through the fifty-five A program. And so with that, and the administration's commitment to increase in diversity and utilizing the disability etiquette and the fifty-five A program, I think we are really on our way to using the program as robustly as we could.
Yeah. And I think it's, like you said, it's, it's proven in the numbers because just from what we've seen in the data, I think the city hired four employees per year through this program in, in 2016 and 2017, but then in 2018 and 2019, seventy-three individuals were hired, mainly as a result of the support from New York City at Work. So I think it's definitely shown an increase, and hopefully we can continue to help promote that as well. And what's your opinion of INTRO 681, which would codify New York City at Work and require SPS to collaborate with MOPED to deploy a public awareness campaign to increase employer awareness of the resources available to facilitate employment of people with disabilities? So what are your thoughts on the INTRO?
We are definitely in agreement with the intent of the program and of the bill, because it's definitely something that we're doing, and we're educating the public, and we're definitely, you know, on target with that. So I know there's definitely additional conversation that could be held with that, and we're open to that, and I'll pass it over to MOPD.
I, I agree with Katie, and we are definitely interested in the intent of the bill and support the intent of the bill. We'd love to be able to, you know, look at the language. As, as you can see, this is a really remarkable collaborative between two city agencies, and we'd love to make, make sure that we can keep this going, as well as even the off-list, right, off-the-list, and the non-competitive.
Awesome, thank you. And just before I move on to my next question, just wanted to acknowledge Councilmember Palladino also, who has also joined us, sorry. So have you guys had a chance to read the CUF report?
Oh, yes.
Okay, okay, Urban Futures. So in response to the COVID pandemic, "The broad acceptance of a remote and hybrid work model has resulted in a greater window of opportunity for the inclusion of individuals with disabilities in workplaces. However, recent research by CUF, Center for an Urban Future, has found government initiatives to be limited in scope and underfunded." So going forward, what has or is the city doing to reverse this trend and eliminate the gaps in funding and support?
Well, I think there, there's a few things just that we've done at MOPD. I'll go back a little bit, right before COVID, really. We actually saw, if people want to work remotely, they have to have the skills and the tools to be able to do that. That's the most important thing. And working remotely just doesn't mean staying at home, you know, and, and answering a phone call. There's, you know, there's whole career options there. What we found is that a lot of folks, they either had little computer skills or technology skills, or their skills had atrophied, or they'd had a different job, and due to the nature of their disability, they needed to find something else. And so one of the things that we did is we partnered with a nonprofit partner, Institute for Career Development. We created a training academy, a Bill IT Training Academy for Cisco CSENT. It's still in operations. We use that model. Because of COVID and with the, with the interactions that we're having, the webinars, the meetings, everything that we're having during COVID, because everything went remote, we saw that about fifty-four percent of our, the participants were using their phones. So if they're using their phones to join a webinar, they're using their phones to apply for a job, they're using their phones to do a resume, et cetera. So one of the things that we did is we were able to get a grant from the Mayor's Fund, and we were able to purchase laptops with any accessible technology that was required. And we started looking to, to train people, skill people up during this particular time. It was very hard to find a partner, a training partner, that understood how to teach different learning styles, that understood that not everybody learns the same way. And we, we tried for, I'd say about a year in order to do that. Some of the folks were able to actually connect to the Manhattan Employment Opportunity Center and get training there, and that was successful for them. But now what we are doing is we are partnering with STRIVE. I don't know if you're familiar with the organization, STRIVE from Harlem, but they have a history of excellent training, internships, paid internships, and placement rate. The CUF report also mentions that so many of the provider agencies, their participants are people with disabilities, either undisclosed or undocumented. And a lot of the providers just don't know how to support them. So we're taking this opportunity, and we're trying to figure out how to really create an inclusive training program. We received some funds from Wells Fargo. It's an administrative assistant training program that we're doing together. And we hope it's going to be a pilot project that we can actually share with many more nonprofits. And we hope it's going to be a pilot project that we can actually share with many more nonprofits. It's expected to launch at the end of October. And for the first time, we're actually going to be writing the playbook or start to write the playbook on how to create an inclusive and accessible training program that providers who do not necessarily serve, "serve" quote unquote, the disability community, even though they know they do, will have access to that. And that's, again, we see an issue and we try to respond. And that's the way we've been working, especially through the training. Because we really have struggled to find a partner, we kind of said, okay, then we're just going to build our own and figure this out in order to be able to share best practices.
Thank you for that. So the, I know on the federal government side, they've included a 7% hiring target for this cohort in its federal jobs contracts. And as a result, I think they recently reported that the hiring of individuals with disabilities in federal agencies has actually exceeded that benchmark and is now at 8.6%. Has there been any discussion of including a similar hiring target for jobs in New York City?
Yes, actually, there has been. And we've been working very closely with our office of the council on this. It's not going to be an easy answer or an easy process, but everyone is really trying to look at if it can be done, how it can be done. But this is the first time this conversation is even happening. So it's a good thing.
Yeah. Okay. So not a specific number yet, but you guys are having conversations about it. Awesome. Okay. I actually just wanted to quickly open it up to my colleagues if you guys had any questions that you wanted to ask. Councilmember Hanif. Oh, sorry.
Hi, good afternoon.
Hello.
Thank you so much for testifying. So I'll first start off with some questions about remote work. The city of New York needs to be an employer that welcomes New Yorkers with disabilities, which we both agree about. And I want to state on the record that the mayor's insistence on mandating in-person work five days a week across city agencies with minimal, if any, exceptions is a policy that discriminates against New Yorkers with disabilities. When I was a staffer in my predecessor's council office, the ability to have a flexible schedule that allowed for remote work was critical to me managing my lupus and being the most productive employee I could be. Coming off the pandemic, we know that work can be done effectively remotely. So my first question is, why is the administration prohibiting work arrangements that New Yorkers with disabilities need?
Just really in the capacity that we're in right now, unable to provide information on that. But I will be able to check in with our colleagues and get back to you.
Thank you. And I'll ask the following questions that I have. And if need be, I can reach out separately for the best points of contact in the agency. So what proactive steps are agencies taking to make their workplaces welcoming and accessible places to work for people with disabilities aside from basic compliance with the ADA?
Thank you. I appreciate the delay. One of the things that we're doing to ensure that the workforce is accessible, as MOPD mentioned, we are doing the, first of all, doing the disability etiquette training. Because that is one, there's one piece to hire individuals with disability, but we also want to make sure that our workforce is prepared. And we are having different conversations on what that looks like. But we know that starting with training, not just hiring managers, but everyone on the best way to engage and interact with individuals with disability is one way. And I know there are other trainings on making sure that our meetings are accessible, making sure that we're using the most accessible platforms and how we communicate and engage, having other ways of meeting when we are engaging in the workforce. And I'm sure if MOPD can speak to some additional guidance that agencies are provided, that will make sure that at the end of it, that we are creating a diverse and inclusive workforce.
And how frequently do these trainings happen? Are they like once or quarterly or how do you conduct them?
For the disability etiquette training, we actually just worked this year to put it as a computer-based training. Previously, it was in partnership, we would go to the agencies or we would have training at our Learning and Development Center. But now through the partnership with MOPD, we were able to make this a computer-based training that is open to anyone that has access to a city network. We are also working with individual agencies who have reached out to us and say, we have an interest in hiring individuals with disability. We have an interest in training our staff. And we're coordinating individual trainings with those agencies and planning, especially within my team, to offer different training on a regular basis to agencies. So we're attacking it from a few different avenues where we're hoping to get the most involvement. And I'll definitely turn it over to MOPD.
I mean, one of the things that our office does is provide guides on our website. And I think it's really important to know that we have, and the staff that we do have, we have someone who does focus on digital accessibility. A lot of people reach out to our agency to get the support that they need. So we started putting together actual trainings on how to make things accessible because reading a guide just kind of doesn't cut it a lot of times. And so, and it's very hands-on. And all of our staff has been trained in that to make, so that we know how to make everything accessible, our documents, our PDFs, our PowerPoints. We also provide social media and event guide, how to make things accessible that way. Because you want to be welcoming and respectful to all. We want to be welcoming and respectful to all. And those guides will be updated. Again, under this new commissioner, we are looking at, you know, other things that we need to focus on or things that we need to update primarily. And those will all be posted on our website. In terms of the trainings, when people ask us, whether it's a city agency or we have outside of the city, multiple businesses that reach out to us all the time to provide that training, showing that the city is an employer, you know, taking the lead here. And we've been able to, over 4,000 folks have been trained by our in-person and now virtual, just the staff at MOPD with lived experience providing that training.
Thank you. I have permission to wrap up. Do you also provide support to individuals with disabilities who may need a wellness planning? And from experience, when I was a young tenant organizer, figuring out that I, it was impossible for me to go into our office every single day. And I needed, or I then understood that I needed to work from home once or twice a week. And I had no prior guidance outside of just sort of searching for others who have had this experience and needed to bring it up to their employer. And I created a wellness plan with the support of other people with disabilities who've done this, but it's been on an individual basis. Is that something that the agency provides support with? Has that come, has that come up?
So we don't do it ourselves. But because of the strong coalition of agencies that we work with, well over 64, whenever anyone has an issue like that, we are able to reach out to our partners. There are partners that have specific experience in very specific disabilities. I'm thinking of, you know, ICS, I'm thinking of JobPath. You know, this is a part of the services that they provide. And so while we do not do that, we also don't give a cold handoff. We make a direct referral, we connect with the individual that we are referring them to. And we also do the follow-up to make sure that that has been done. And if there are any issues or anything else that needs to be addressed with that plan, they can always reach back out to us. But that's one of the great reasons about having this great coalition of partnerships.
That's really wonderful to know. And then my final question is, can you share the amount of New Yorkers with disabilities who have left municipal jobs since March 2020? And can you share if that number is disproportionate in relation to municipal employees who don't have disabilities?
So as it relates to getting those specific numbers, I'll definitely have to check in with my colleagues and get back to you. But it's really important to note that the city only tracks individuals with disabilities through the 55A program. This is because there is a specific need and the individual has to have that disability, a disability, qualifying disability, to participate in that program. Outside of that, it is not legal for us to collect that information because we cannot make any kind of employment decision, you know, based on the person's disability. So we would be able to get back to you on the number of individuals that have left the 55A program. But as city employees who have disability, that is not something that we currently track.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. And next I'll have our deputy speaker, Ayella, ask her questions.
Good afternoon. Can you tell me what the number of staffers assigned to MOPD is?
Assigned to MOPD?
Yeah.
Sorry. On MOPD, I believe it's seven and the others are partner agencies.
Okay. Is MOPD currently working with DCAST at all to try to identify positions that may be available that could be set aside for individuals with disabilities that are looking to work remotely?
For the city remotely? I guess it depends on the job description.
Exactly. So actually, as it relates to general remote work, right now, that is not something that I can speak to in terms of what the city is doing regarding that. As it relates to positions for individuals with disabilities and reasonable accommodations that may be needed, the city does evaluate individuals on a case-by-case basis. But there has been a lot of increases since, or instances since the pandemic that allows for a work, individuals to work internally within a city agency. So we can definitely get back to you on that question.
I mean, yeah, I think we have a demand for a workforce, right, that doesn't exist right now. Every city agency is understaffed at this point. And there are individuals sitting at home right now who are quite capable of doing those jobs if they were provided the tools. But I think that they also unfortunately require that we all play a hand in not only encouraging but demanding that they be seen and heard and included in these conversations because I don't think that that happens unfortunately for, you know, people with different abilities organically. I find, you know, that being a member of even this committee and when I chaired it, that the disabilities, you know, community is often very disenfranchised and not. I think, you know, we allow the state to take kind of, you know, over a lot of, you know, the jurisdiction because they have a lot of jurisdiction over some of these matters. But in this case, when we're talking about workforce development, we have jobs that are readily available. And I am confident that we have a workforce that is also quite capable. I get the whole people have to come into work and, you know, there are certain positions that really require that, right? I run an office, constituent services office. I need, you know, people there to interface with the community, right, who may not have access to computers and cannot do Zoom and don't know how to operate a smartphone, right? That's necessary. So I understand the logic behind that. But I also have a budget director and a legislative director. They don't have to necessarily be in the office, right? They could work easily, you know, from home and still be able to do that work. And I encourage, you know, MOPD to try. And I know that with a very limited staff, which is why I asked initially, how many members, how many staffers are assigned to MOPD? That that can become difficult, but I really would encourage there to be a more intentional, right, level of communication with DCAST to see if, you know, there was a way to incorporate some of those opportunities right into the work that MOPD is already doing. And I think there was, how does MOPD, because I think you referenced a few times, right, people's, the need, the ability of certain folks with different abilities to be able to do these jobs, that they weren't computer literate, they may not be computer literate, they may have not exercised that skill set in a long time. How does MOPD survey individuals to determine that?
So through our NYC at Work program, when someone calls, whether it's 311 or through the website or before COVID, they would come to the office. We also have referrals from our partner agencies across all disabilities. You know, cognitive, blind, vision, hearing, physical, across all disabilities. So when someone's interested in work, the first thing we do is we provide like a screening. It used to be in-person, sometimes, now it's kind of on the phone or via Zoom, depending on the request of the individual. And we try to understand what the challenges have been, what experience, what education, where are they with their technical needs. Then we have an orientation on NYC at Work so that the individuals can understand exactly sort of what this program is like. If they are looking for a job that requires any kind of technical skill, this is one of the reasons why we partner with the state vocational rehabilitation agencies. We will refer them to one of the agencies, we'll refer them to one of our partners. As I mentioned earlier before to Councilmember Lee, we've actually started looking at creating accessible, integrated training because of this kind of approach. So we're partnering with workforce training programs that are really good at that, that know that they have people with disabilities that are struggling as well. And now we're trying to create an inclusive program. It's the skill, it's, this is at the bottom and the heart of it all. The level of skill for many people is where it was when they left school. And that's because, as I mentioned before, there's really been little to no accessible training. In all of the trainings that have happened, there's been little to no training, which is why we've just in our own little way started our own. But we also have other partners.
And I don't want to interrupt you, but I appreciate that, I appreciate you saying that. However, my reluctance is that if there's no, if there's no formal surveying, right, process and we're evaluating folks as we're, you know, interacting with them through the course of the work of MOPD or relying on referrals, that that's not an accurate reflection of the actual census of individuals that may require a specific accommodation. And so I wonder, is there, is that something that has come up? Is it something that MOPD is considering or would consider to the larger network, right, of New Yorkers that can help inform how, you know, MOPD is prioritizing policy? Really, you know, what type of jobs individuals are looking for?
Well, the way that we do it is, I mean, we actually have a job board. People can go to the job board and they can be referred to the job board, they can apply.
How would I know about the job board? If I'm sitting at home, right, and I'm already over the age of 22, which disconnects me from a lot of government, you know, services, how would I know?
Well, I will say that one of the, in one of the programs that we're looking at in the very near future, PR campaigns are crucial, social media is crucial. And we understand that and we actually will be working in partnership with SBS.
And I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I'm really, I want to encourage, you know, this conversation because I think it's necessary. But I think that we also, you know, in 2022, have to kind of start thinking outside of the box and understanding that not everybody that has a different ability is incapable, right, of functioning in the workforce. And I think that, you know, there really isn't like any, there's no real quantifiable evidence that I've seen that tells me one thing or the other, right? that I've seen that tells me one thing or the other, right? I don't know that we're surveying the larger network of New Yorkers that have, you know, special needs. And so I, before, you know, I took more than enough time, I just want to leave you with a, you know, suggestion. A couple of years ago, under the Bloomberg administration, one of the only good things that he did was that he did, he did come up with what was called the Age Friendly NYC Initiative. And I found that that initiative was actually really helpful in enforcing all of the city agencies to really look at ways that they could become more age-friendly. And I don't see why we wouldn't or shouldn't be doing something similar for, you know, MLPD and your network of families and different agency groups that you're working with. It's just a proposal, but I think that, right, I like to have data so that I know that I'm moving in the direction that best meets the needs of the population I'm trying to help, right? And I think a lot of the times with the disabilities community, we kind of assume, we make a lot of assumptions, right? Because we don't have that data. So thank you for being here today and for all the work that you do. I don't know how you do it with seven people, but.
Well, let me just clarify that we have other people in the office, but they are agency partners. So that's how we're able to get things done. And that's been, so we have OEM, we have Do-It or OIT now, we have Law. I mean, we have other partners in order for us to be able to get the work done. We couldn't, as a matter of fact, when I first got there, I was the eighth person. So in seven years, we've been able, you know, to build it out with partners and in partnership is also with SBS.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Actually, it's funny because my next question was about the accessibility reports because I'm also a big fan of data as well. So just wanted to know, is MOPED planning on releasing a 2022 accessibility NYC report? And if so, do you know when we could expect to see that report?
Yes, we are, but it probably won't be till sometime next year.
Okay.
Perhaps mid to latter part of the year.
Okay. So 2023 accessibility. Yeah, okay. But if, to the extent that you're able, can you briefly summarize the initiatives that MOPED will be discussing in the report? Like any new, you know, are there any reports in there discussing accessibility improvements? And the work that's still needed to be done with employment, health, a lot of those areas? If you could, if you, do you know what initiatives will be in the report?
So I'm going to go back to the fact that the commissioner has only been here a month. And I, we really want to give her the opportunity to look at the landscape, to speak with the, with the community and to understand where we need to go in the future. I think this is an opportunity for us to, you know, look forward, make changes. But she really needs to be the one that's helping us drive this. And I'm sure in the next few months to year, we'll have a better idea of exactly where we're going to go.
Okay. We definitely look forward to seeing that one. And then just my last set of questions before we hear from the public is just around MOPED and SBS initiatives. So in 2019, I know that MOPED and Department of SBS with New York City Business Improvement District Association and Public Policy Lab launched Empowering Accessibility, an online resource that enables New York City small business owners to more easily understand their legal obligation for compliance with accessibility standards. So just out of curiosity, does SBS have any data on whether New York City businesses, have they used the resource? Has it been helpful for them? And what metrics are available to evaluate the resource's effectiveness if there is any?
Yes, thank you so much for the question itself. So we're really proud of our partnership with MLPD. Since then, we've, since 2019, we've really been able to get out into the community, into the business community to really ensure that they understood the resources that were available to them. In terms of the viewership at this point, we've had about 11,000 people, unique individuals, seek access into really identifying what the resources were. We've also done a lot of Train the Trainers within the bid network to ensure that, again, people, people just need to know, right? And it's really about communicating the information to them and understanding that we are, in addition to that, a resource for them.
And I'm assuming if you work with different bids across the city, can you actually speak to which languages also? Because I know that that sometimes is a barrier, especially in districts like mine where it's 45% Asian-American and there's multiple languages spoken just in my district alone, and I know Queens in general and the city in general, so, yeah.
So what I can tell you, it's offered in about 12 different languages at this point, and I can get back to the specifics in which, in terms of which one, but 12.
Great. And what other programs does MOPED and SBS work together on and offer to help improve access for individuals with disabilities to small businesses in New York City? And it could be, you know, programs to increase hiring at said businesses as well as access to small businesses themselves?
Yeah, so what I can say, so we're extremely excited about a collaboration. I know that Martha's talked in a bit of detail in terms of kind of the upcoming programs that we'll be working alongside with her. MOPED has always been a great relationship in terms of SBS. We currently serve the workforce division. We currently serve about 100,000 individuals per year. And we do, within that population, clearly individuals that have, do display a disability as well. Working alongside MLPD, we really want to ensure that we're providing even better quality services, better access. They're going to be working alongside of our staffs. Currently, they do, we do provide supportive services for them. So if anyone were to need or acquire adaptive equipment or translative services, either at the recruitment phase of the process or throughout the hiring process, we do ensure that we're providing that. But again, I think we're looking to increase job seekers' awareness. And we do as well work alongside of different community partners within the, within New York City to make sure that we're getting them to the next best step.
Awesome. And then going back to the Center for Urban Futures report, they were, they had a proposal of having SBS work with MOPED to create mobile small business accessibility teams with the goal of helping over 2,000 small and medium-sized workplaces become fully accessible in 2025? And just thoughts on how feasible you think this is? Because when you think of the expansiveness of how many small businesses there are in New York City, I know even with the walkthroughs that I've done with the commissioner in my district, I don't know if small business owners, how, where they are in terms of what their obligations are legally for people with disabilities. And so I just wanted to see how feasible you thought that goal was of 2,000 small and medium-sized workplaces?
So what I can do, so my specialty is really within the workforce development area, but what I can do is bring your question back to make sure that I do get a dedicated staff member that's able to have a more expansive response.
Yeah, no, and if the answer is, if it's not feasible, we would love to know what the challenges are, what sort of, you know, support would be needed to make sure that it is feasible. So, yeah, if you could let us know, that'd be great. And I think with that, I'm gonna, oh, sorry, sorry, Councilmember Mealy, go ahead.
Yes, I just wanted to ask, reasonable accommodation, do you have any output on anyone with disability who was working and during the pandemic? They were working inside the office and now with the pandemic, they say they have to come back and some have not or chose not to come back to work. Do you have what percentage of individuals who did not come back to work in the office?
Thank you for that question. This is not, we do not have information on that topic, but we can coordinate with our colleagues and get back to you.
But that, has that happened with anyone with disability who was working in the office? And then during the pandemic, you know, everyone was sheltered in place. And then when it was time, like the mandate now to come back to work, they chose not to come back into the office?
So in my.
Any?
In the role that I work in, I wouldn't be privy to that information because the EU officers usually handle reasonable accommodations requests.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Okay, and I'm going to pass it off to Sarah.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you very much to members of the administration. We really appreciate your testimony, and you may go at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So we will now hear testimony from the public. I'd like to remind everyone that I will call up the individuals in panels and all testimony will be limited to three minutes. Just as a note, we will be doing mixed panels, meaning we will have both remote and in-person testimony. So the first panel will be Melissa Lent from the Center for an Urban Future, and she will be on Zoom. The panel will also consist of James Wilson from Gallup New York City as well as Iman Ramawi-Doster from New York Lawyers for Public Interest. And if the two in-person witnesses want to come to the table, that would be great. Thank you. If Melissa Lent is ready, you may begin when the sergeant queues you.
Starting time.
Good afternoon. My name is Melissa Lent. I am a policy researcher at the Center for an Urban Future, a think tank focused on creating a more inclusive economy in New York City. And thank you so much for the opportunity to testify today. There are nearly 1 million New York City residents with a self-identified disability. In 2021, according to a report from the Center for an Urban Future, nearly 17% of all working-age New Yorkers with a disability were unemployed, more than double the pre-pandemic level. Systemic barriers have prevented thousands more from entering the labor force in the first place. Despite this, there are enormous societal changes promising a major expansion of economic opportunity, remote and hybrid work, advances in assistive technologies, and a surging number of unfilled job openings. The city council should seize this opportunity to help make New York City a national leader in employment for people of disabilities. First, city leaders will have to tackle several longstanding challenges. Our research shows that providers of career training to disabled New Yorkers and workforce development organizations that serve the general population struggle to access public funding to deliver more effective and accessible programs to people with disabilities. At the same time, key publicly funded initiatives are effective, but still far too small scale. The mayor's office for people of disabilities is succeeding in connecting people to living wage jobs. But as Councilmember Lee has cited from our report, its entire budget is just over $800,000, significantly less than the per capita funding for similar agencies in Chicago, Los Angeles, and Boston. City funding for contracted programs serving New Yorkers with intellectual and developmental disabilities has plunged 82% over the past two decades after adjusting for inflation. The city council should take steps to strengthen and restructure the existing system to foster greater economic opportunity for New Yorkers of disabilities. City officials should consider launching the nation's first accessibility training challenge, a $10 million competitive grant program for workforce organizations and disability services providers to partner on integrating accessibility throughout existing programs. In addition, the city council should introduce legislation establishing mobile small business accessibility teams operated in partnership between SBS and MLPD with the goal of helping 2,500 workplaces become fully accessible to employees of disabilities by 2025. To help coordinate these providers, employers, and investments, the city should build a central career services and employer directory for people of disabilities and raise the profile of these opportunities by hosting the nation's first Accessible Careers Week. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. We really believe that New York City should seize this moment to lead the nation in expanding employment for opportunities for people with disabilities.
Thank you so much, Melissa. If you are okay with me asking just a couple of questions and maybe you can fit in some of your other testimony into the answers that got cut off. But, so I just wanted to thank you because your, your report from CUF has been extremely informative to the committee. And just wanted to know if there's anything else that you wanted to emphasize? I know you just mentioned the central, centralizing the career agency, you know. So aside from what you've already testified to, is there anything else you'd like to emphasize that could help boost New York City's hiring for people with disabilities?
Yes, I also did want to emphasize the city council establishing a 7% hiring target for people with disabilities in city jobs and hired through city contracts, replicating a key initiative at the federal level, which you mentioned earlier today. And also, I would like to mention, well, actually, that was mostly what I wanted to mention from my, from my testimony.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. And just one final thought, question. So throughout your research on this issue, have you observed disparate impacts on accessibility based on intersection of disability with race, gender, and socioeconomic status? And if so, how? And what would your recommendations be?
Yes, so definitely throughout our research, things that have been highlighted again, again and again to us is that disability or people who identify with a disability, it is an intersectional issue. And people who do identify as Black or Latinx/Hispanic do see a higher unemployment rate than white people with disabilities. So that is definitely something that has come up in our research and has even been told anecdotally to us by workforce development organizations that specifically help people with disabilities as well as experts on, on employment for people with disabilities as well.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much as well.
Thank you, Melissa. We'll now move to our two in-person testimony. The first witness we'll hear from is James Wilson from Gallup New York City. You may begin when the sergeant queues you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to first thank the council members for allowing me to testify today on behalf of Gallup NYC. And I'd like to offer my specific thanks to the Chairwoman Lee for taking up this issue of workforce development for people with disabilities. It's a very important issue and I'm gratified to see this council taking action. My name is James Wilson and I'm the Executive Director of Gallup NYC, an organization that is dedicated to improving the lives of New Yorkers with disabilities through therapeutic horsemanship. Gallup NYC is providing therapeutic riding lessons to New Yorkers for more than 50 years, nope, 15 years. And we have been, we have seen firsthand the impacts of unemployment and underemployment has on the lives of people with disabilities and their families. We have seen young people who age out of the system and are left with few opportunities on a day-to-day basis. Without meaningful job skills, these young people do not have the opportunity to work. We have seen this need in our community and we have developed a program to address it. Our program is very simple. We teach job skills. We teach people with disabilities the skills necessary to have a successful work life. And then we give them the chance to work in a safe, supported environment in order to practice those skills. All work is paid, of course. Gallup NYC is currently offering supported employment to people helping take care of our more than 20 horses and people who help support our therapeutic riding lessons. Our program is new and growing. At this point, we only have eight people working in our program and the same number of job coaches. Each staff member is paired with a job coach to support them and help ensure their success. Thus far, we've generally recruited from the ranks of our riders, which allow people who have shown a deep interest in horses and in therapeutic riding to learn more skills and gain meaningful experience. It is ultimately our goal to transition our workers to employers other than Gallup NYC. The skills that we are teaching are not specific to horses. They are transferable skills. In our programs, people learn how to arrive on time, people learn how to communicate with their supervisor, they learn how to plan their work to be able to accomplish in the allotted time, which I might not, and how to meet customers and address questions along the way. A very brief success story. Earlier this year, we hired our first customer-facing role through the Job Skills Program. Claudine is passionate about supporting people with disabilities and as she was one of our therapeutic riding, riding, riding students. And she has her own lived experience with the benefits of therapeutic riding. This, this passion translates to a wonderful energy on site. This is a win-win for both Claudine and for Gallup NYC as we have an engaged, committed person. as we have an engaged, committed person who demonstrates our values onsite and loves to come to work. And Claudine is able to learn and practice those skills that allow her to have a more full and engaging life. Okay, thanks. I'd like to pause here and ask for your support. Gallup NYC wants to do more and an allocation of $50,000 through the Citywide Young Adult Entrepreneur Program Initiative will allow us to expand our program and offer more opportunities for people like Claudine. Finally, I'd like to ask Chairwoman Lee to come out and see our program. Anybody basically who's in this room, come see our program. There are few things more impactful than seeing our work firsthand and it would be my pleasure to show you. Thank you for your consideration and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. I'm always a huge fan of doing site visits because I feel like it's different when you see things versus just hear about them. And so I'd be curious to, to check it out. And just out of curiosity, the $50,000 that you would want to ask for for the Citywide Young Adult Entrepreneurship Initiative, would that be used for staffing? Would it be used to pay instructors? Just if you could elaborate a little bit?
Sure, it would be five, five people who are actually working and then an equivalent number of job coaches as well.
I'm sorry, sir?
Five people with disabilities who would be working on a weekly basis. The number of hours that they work depends on the person, obviously. And then we would also use that money to, to support those workers with job coaches.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now hear from, and I apologize if I mispronounce, Iman Romawi-Doster from New York Lawyers for Public Interest.
Yeah, thank you. It's Iman Romawi-Doster, but it's all good. It's not, it's not very easy.
I apologize. And you may begin when the sergeant queues you.
Thank you. Yeah, so my name is Iman Romawi-Doster and I'm here as the Access Ride Coordinator and Organizer at the New York Lawyers for the Public Interest, NLP, which has advocated for 45 years for the rights of persons with disabilities in New York. So if you think unemployment is generally bad, it's even worse in a disability community. The most recent report of the Bureau of Labor Statistics states that only 19.1% of persons with disabilities were employed. And that was from last year. Instead of being reactive, we need to change our approach and be proactive. Employers must send job listings to organizations and agencies that may come in contact with individuals with disabilities, including independent living centers, college disability offices, or state vocational rehabilitation agencies. I tried obtaining employment help from these disability agents advocacy organizations. But I was told time and time again that because I didn't have any mental problems or I was overqualified, overqualified for many available jobs for people with disabilities, I couldn't get help and to just be patient as I searched and applied alone. Even the mayor's office for people with disabilities merely told me to join my community board, become the president of the community board, and then call them back once I got that appointment. That was 2017, by the way. I got no referrals and no one told me about any of the independent living centers or organizations. The organizations that are independent living centers are run by people with disabilities in every borough. We need to connect people with disabilities to advocacy organizations who can actually help find employment. And we need to have adequate funds for those organizations. And by the way, I received, I received zero help from, to keep my Medicaid, the lifeline for people with severe disabilities when I found work. So I went on to NLP's insurance, which has been extremely expensive for a double amputee with lupus. We need to help people with disabilities retain Medicaid when they start working. Historically, I have never had an issue getting in the door for a job. But once I got hired and they could see that my lupus flare ups happened, employers would change their tune and suddenly say and do things that would be deemed discriminatory. I wasn't believed by one employer when I was having mini strokes and nearly died. I wasn't accommodated while working at a different organization when I asked to work from home once a week, which led to me pushing myself to the point of coming into the office and I finally just quit because of my pain. And the last organization I worked for a few years before I worked at NLP wouldn't allow me to go part-time and literally told me, push yourself through the pain and exhaustion because we need you here full time. I ultimately quit that job too, which is often what people with disabilities in my situation are forced to do. I'm educated. I have an extensive amount of organizing and facilitation experience. I've worked with a number of nonprofits and agencies throughout New York City and US since 2000. I've been around the world and I've made all kinds of contacts with whom I still talk and still work with, all while having lupus. But having lupus for 24 years and being an amputee for the last nine years has shown me just how strong ableism is. I've been treated like my accessibility asks are too much when they are very within the ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act mode. And, you know, I just don't understand why I'm discriminated against. I've been made to feel bad or wrong when I've addressed this discrimination, which I knew was there. Employers must be aware of the requirements of disability laws and they must provide people with disabilities with the necessary supports and accommodations to perform these jobs. I've been working for NLP for almost six years and NLP has seen my dedication. I have put into my work every single day. Not only does my work get results, but I keep NLP in the media. I keep them in the press and I keep funding coming in while being disabled. I just needed someone to give me a chance and believe in me and believe that I could do the job. And I'll, I'll submit the rest of my testimony, but yeah, that's.
Yes, please do. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. And I know that, because I came from the nonprofit sector and I know that they need a lot of help in this area just serving the community that have a lot of the similar issues that you're facing as well. So thank you for the work that you do. Just one quick question, do you think, because this is something that some folks have been talking to me about and I wonder, because I, I oftentimes feel like education, the earlier that it starts, the better. And so if there are awareness or education even amongst school age children and staff as well as parents, do you think that that would be helpful? Because oftentimes I feel like parents also have no clue in terms of what services are even out there. You know, and, and I had one parent in my district who had to literally send her child who lives in Eastern Queens into Manhattan. And that commute daily is very grueling also for her child. And so I just wonder if there's, if, if in your situation, for example, would it have been helpful if you had been connected earlier on as well?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And unfortunately, when you are a physical disabled, physically disabled person and you can hold a conversation and you have experience and skills, people suddenly think you don't need any help whatsoever. And that's a lie. It took me a long time to re-enter the workforce and get a job and then stay in that job. But I got no help and I'm not the only one like that. And I've talked to a number of people who have approached MLPD for this help and they get denied that as well. And that's unconscionable. I can't imagine calling an agency and saying, hey, I've got all these skills. Look at me. I want to come out to the community, even if it's low paying. I'll come. And then them tell you, go join your community board and then basically say that they want to use you as a political pawn instead of helping you. That's not community support. That's spitting in my face and telling me, oh, yeah, we're gonna help and support you. And then you don't. And unfortunately, I've heard, like, I, I appreciate one of the people sharing, talking about the intersectionality of racism and sexism within the disability community because I've noticed a lot of gatekeeping. They don't want people like me there. And they don't want a lot of people like me there. And I've encountered a lot of folks who are specifically Black and Brown women who have encountered this as well. Regardless of what they're doing now, historically, it's been that way. So that's what I'm going on. And since they've not done anything yet with new commissioner, I mean, great, awesome. I want to see what they're gonna do, but I'm not interested in what they're saying because what they're saying does not line up with what they're doing. And it's really annoying me as an advocate who's been out here for decades doing all this stuff, continually being ignored and, and just shoot away as a, as a, like a, I'm an annoying gnat when I'm bringing up something that's valid and that the community actually cares about and wants addressed. And I wish, I wish we addressed the racism and sexism that goes on in the disability community because it's rife and I'm sick and tired of it. So, yeah.
Thank you for sharing that point.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes, and please submit your written testimony. We'd be very interested. Thank you both. You may go back to your seats. Our next panel will be fully remote. The first panelist will be German Junior Santos. You may begin when the sergeant queues you.
Time starts now.
Hi, this is German Santos speaking.
You may begin.
Good afternoon. I've been, I'm a New York City resident, born and raised in, in Morningside Heights area. My, my life experience, my life experience right now is that I've been unemployed since I graduated, since I graduated with an associate's degree back in college and, and I've been trying to, I've been trying to seek employment recently. And I've been dealing, I've been dealing with a bit some sort of a rejection recently because people, because some employers tell me that I need to complete certain requirements in order to, in order to fit in the description of, of that position. Okay? Can you guys hear me?
Yes, thank you.
My main, my main purpose is that I'm not only trying to help myself continue on to seek employment elsewhere. My main purpose is to help, is to help other people with disabilities or without disabilities seek resources and, and, and just by, and just by asking questions to, to those employers out there, whether it fits from, from, from a corporation such as Duane Reade, such as, such as, such as applying for, for the United States Postal Service, such as, such as applying to, to work inside of a sports arena.
Are you finished with your testimony?
I think you were muted. If you are looking to be unmuted, just give us one second.
Hello?
Yes, we hear you now. Thank you. You can continue. We paused the clock.
I'm sorry about that. My, my main purpose is to not only help myself achieve my goals through, through seeking employment, through whichever company that, I know that's hiring, whether if it's working for, working for a corporate store such as Duane Reade or, or working, or working for a restaurant or, or working for a nonprofit organization. And I'm, I'm doing, I'm doing volunteer work with the Street Block Association in a borough of Manhattan. But, but what I'm trying to do is improve, improve my skills and, and continuing to seeking more resources by learning to connect with employers, by learning to, by learning to adapt, to, to have that social network connection with those professionals, with those professionals in need. And that's what, that's what I'm trying to guide.
Time expired.
To learn to take action, to take action, to, to connect, to connect, to connect with those professionals out there in, in order to, in order to have that, have that emotional guidance, have that emotional support. That's my comment.
Thank you so much for your testimony. And I'll, I'll get your contact information actually afterwards because I would want to actually sit and connect you with some folks. But I appreciate your testimony and for sharing, sharing your thoughts. Thank you so much.
If you need my, if you need my contact information, you can let me know ahead of time.
Okay.
Thank you. Our next witness will be Joseph Damiano. If you are on Zoom or if you are watching the live stream, please log on. If not, we will be moving on. Because Damiano is not present, we will be moving on. If there is anyone present in the room or on Zoom that hasn't had the opportunity to testify, please raise your hand or find a sergeant to submit a witness slip. Seeing no one else, I would like to note that written testimony, which will be reviewed in the full by committee staff, may be submitted to the record up to 72 hours after the close of this hearing by emailing it to testimony@council新yorkcity.gov. Chair Lee, we have concluded public testimony for this hearing.
Thank you so much. And again, thank you to all the advocates. You know, this hearing was really, was really from your advocacy efforts and your pushing us to do better. So we thank you and look forward to actually having some very near future other hearings on disabilities in the future. And so we just want to keep you, please keep, please stay posted for that. Make sure you check the website on the council website for, for a list of the future upcoming hearings. But we are planning a couple more specifically on the topic of people with disabilities. And so thank you so much. And that concludes the hearing. Thank you.